Next up on the agenda is another school presentation. Madison Elementary and Principal Jean Clark.
Good evening. See if I can get to our PowerPoint here.
Welcome.
Great. Well, good evening. And good evening Chairman Dalgrin, and Board Superintendent Jett, families and guests. We are so excited to be here tonight and we have a wonderful group to represent Madison and our team and we are here to share our story tonight. And we have a lot of energy tonight, so just wait. And I'm going to have our team introduce themselves. So come on up, Mr. Court.
My name is Sam Court, Administrative Intern.
Denise Hipsh, Academic Coach.
Hello, I'm Kiara Wong. I'm a fifth grader in Chinese immersion program at Madison.
Hi, I'm Jean Yu. I'm the Academic Coach for Chinese Immersion Program.
Hi, I'm Heather Ebner and I am the Young Scholars Specialist and Academic Coach at Madison.
My name is Khalid Ali and I'm a student at Madison Elementary and I'm a fifth grader.
My name is Laura Bakker. I'm a fourth grade teacher and the Academic Achievement Building Coordinator.
My name is Maurice Brown and I'm in fourth grade.
All right, we have a great team. We're excited again to be here. We have a special treat for you right now. Mrs. Ebner?
We're going to talk about this later, but we are a, we use CLR in, at Madison. And so we would like to start with that today to kind of wake you all up. So I'm going to model it with my team here first and then we're going to ask you to do it, okay? So this is an example of a call and response that we do at Madison. So are we ready, team?
We are ready.
Okay, so, "Y'all gonna make me lose my mind."
Up in here, up in here.
Okay, so now you have to do it with us, okay? Are you ready? So when I say it, then you have to answer back. It's call and response, okay? "Y'all gonna make me lose my mind."
Up in here, up in here.
Okay, that was okay. You guys could probably do better. Should we do it one more time? Okay, you really have to enthusiasm, okay? "Y'all gonna make me lose my mind."
Up in here, up in here.
Much better. I like that.
All right. All right, thank you Heather. Okay. So we're going to also, I'm going to have our wonderful young students come on up. So if you three will come on up. Khalid, Kiara, and Maurice. And we start our day, every day with our school announcements. And part of our announcements begin with our Madison Pledge. And those are our core values. And I'm very proud to tell you that our Madison Pledge was written by one of our teachers and our second grade teacher. Let's see if I can get this, there we go. So here's Khalid and Kiara and Maurice reading our Madison Pledge. Khalid, here we go.
I am Khalid Ali. I will read, I will read the Madison Pledge in Somali.
Thank you Khalid. Kiara? Thank you Kiara. And Maurice?
Today I pledge to be com- to be safe, kind, and responsible. I pledge to be kind with my words and actions. I pledge to make responsible choices at school today. I pledge to be safe at all times and in all places. I am staying proud.
Thank you. And so this is what it looks like. We have it up and posted all over our building and all of our classrooms and we live by our pledge every day. So thank you, boys and girls. So with this time, I'm going to show you our Madison Proud video.
Welcome to Madison!
I love Madison because I can write what I want to write, I can sing what I want to sing, and I can learn how to be a leader in this community.
I like Madison because there's Chinese immersion and I wanted to learn like two languages.
Madison Student Ambassadors would like to welcome new people to our school and show how Madison is safe, kind, and responsible.
Ambassadors make Madison safe, responsible, kind.
I love the diversity that we have here at Madison and working with the parents and the parent organizations. And we've built a learning community around our Madison Pledge of being safe and responsible and kind. And although we have two programs here, we are a learning community of one. And we are Madison Proud.
Today I pledge to be safe, kind, and responsible.
We believe family engagement is vital to our student success. And once every month, we have a Family Night, Somali Family Night here at Madison. And we come together, meet and discuss how we can improve our students' education. And our families are very much engaged in helping our students' education.
It's amazing to see that my second grader is almost fluent in another language at this point. And the growth that we've seen in both of our children has been amazing.
I love coming to Madison every day. I've got a child here in the immersion program and I just love him being able to be here. He's so proud of it.
First time I came into Madison and see this wonderful Chinese immersion program, I'm just immediately surprised and be proud of these students with how much they learn, how fast they pick up the language. And seeing these students making progress every day.
I love the immersion parents, working with immersion students, parents, families. And also I got a great team and I work with great coworkers.
We love Madison because...
It's been my passion for 40 years with students and staff.
We're confident.
We're creative.
Fantastic, caring staff.
Because we have imagination.
There's a large sense of community.
It's great when I see the teachers planning together and then carrying out those co-teaching lessons. We see a lot of engagement for the students and we see great student growth.
The reflection room at Madison is a safe and welcome spot for students and staff to come, to find their calm, to be ready to learn, to work their plans, and to celebrate the success that they have here at school every day.
Academic achievement is a creative thinking skills program in our school where we challenge our kids mentally and physically. They work on teams, they use a lot of teamwork, and they get to go around to other schools in the area and compete in friendly competitions that have to do with building up their creative thinking skills and their problem-solving skills.
The music classroom at Madison Elementary School is extremely important. It builds confidence, it creates a sense of community, and most of all, it builds a passion for life and for learning that is just beyond all that's possible. Madison Proud.
Madison Proud.
Madison Proud. Madison Proud. Madison Proud.
So you can see, we have a lot of fun things that we do and we're very proud of all of that we do there at Madison. So moving on to our demographics, we are very balanced at Madison. And we have a total enrollment of 688 students with 46% black and 45% white. So again, we have a great balance at Madison. And looking at our special group demographics, we have an EL population of about 26% and free and reduced about 71% and special ed population of about 16%. And looking at our free and reduced population over about the past three years, it stayed pretty steady with free and reduced popul- or reduced at about 70 to 71% there. And our EL population has ticked up just a little bit from 19% all the way up to about 26%. And students receiving special ed services, we've dropped just slightly from 17% to 16%. And our attendance, we're proud to say that 95% of our students are attending. So a very steady rate there and feel really good about where we're at. I'm going through this really rapidly here for you. And our MCA reading scores, we were at 41.9% and this year, we've really set our expectations high. And there, we've set it at 51%. And our math MCAs, we know we have work to do here. We were at 39.2% and we're going to increase to 49.2% this year. And I have to tell a story about one of our teachers. We started to set our goal only at 7% and we had a student, a teacher that stood up and said, "You know, we can do better at that than that. We need to go to 50, 50% or 49.2% rather." So I think that really says a lot about our teachers. When we, when he can, we can set our expectations high for our kids, I think that's a great story. And Laura has a little more to add to that about ambitious goals.
So when we were talking to this teacher who had mentioned that we can be a little bit more ambitious with ourselves, we were saying that we as a staff set very ambitious goals for our students and we need to do the same for our whole school and as a staff as well.
So we have great expectations for our kids. In special ed, this was a cause for celebration for us. We were at 17.1% and last year, our special ed rose to 23.2%. So this was cause for celebration for us. So what is our journey or our success story? At the beginning of the year, every leadership team developed a target page. And for some of the new board members, a target page is a collection of what your core beliefs are. And so we really dug deep into our data and our best instructional practices and we developed a roadmap to provide growth and engagement for all students. And our target page really is essentially where our school goals are. So anything that we do, we flex back to our target page. And I'm going to have Laura come up and tell about our, our goal-setting with our students through her eyes. This is a great story too.
So in August, we hold goal-setting meetings with our parents and students. This is a really great chance for us to build relationships with both our students and with their families and to make the transition back to school for them a lot more comfortable. It's a great time for, for teachers to be able to hear parents and what they have to share about their students and to set social and academic goals with us before the school year even starts. It's also a chance for teachers to provide really great examples of what to expect to see as typical grade-level work. We also set individual goals based on data with each of our students individually throughout the year. We meet monthly with our students and we review and revise those goals together. It's a great opportunity for students to view and understand their personal data in terms of numbers and also on a line graph which plots their scores so that they can see it visually and understand what it looks like to level up, which is what we call it at school.
In Ms. Bakker's class, we level up by setting goals for ourselves and taking important steps to achieve them. My steps are get a good night's sleep, read every day, practice breathing exercises before a test. These will help me reach my goal.
So that was the example that we wanted to share with Laura and with Maurice was how our teachers and our students work together with goal-setting. And you heard a little bit when Sherry was up here that at schools, we set goal-setting with parents in August and we carry them through all the way through the year. So students and teachers are always conferring and looking at their goals all the way through the year. So those students know what their goals are and they're always, as Maurice says, leveling up. So nice job. Thanks for sharing that. Mr. Court, I think you're up next.
St. Cloud is a PBIS district, so Madison is proud to be a PBIS school as well. PBIS meaning Positive Behavior Intervention and Supports. Our goal is to basically create a school with safe, kind, and responsible students. So to do that, we have a lot in place for PBIS at Madison. We have monthly assemblies where our students gather together and we celebrate school-wide successes, classroom successes, and even recognize Students of the Month. And those would be academic behavior and social and emotional goals and celebrations that they have reached. We have a monthly theme each month. This month's theme is goal-setting and next month's theme is leadership. Teachers pass out Mustang slips to students that they recognize and witness, excuse me, demonstrating positive behavior throughout school. And we even recognize our cleanest classrooms with a Blue Broom Award at the end of each week and a Golden Spoon to those classes that have the best cafeteria behavior. One other fun challenge that we've been working with our PBIS team and our students with has been the mannequin challenge. So if you are on Facebook, you've probably seen a mannequin challenge lately, but if you haven't, maybe we can demonstrate real quick. Are you guys ready for your poses? Mannequin challenge, three, two, one, go. So we use the mannequin challenge, thanks guys, you can unfreeze. We use the mannequin challenge after students came back from winter break to just reteach school-wide expectations. So we had a hallway mannequin challenge where you can see there where students froze and modeled the school-wide behavior expectations in the lunchroom, in the bathrooms, in the classrooms, and across all school settings. It was just kind of a fun way to come back and just reinforce all those great school-wide routines that we have already in place. Along with PBIS allows us to track our discipline data, to look for patterns and trends that would allow us to modify or adjust our schedules, support, or programs. And so our PBIS data is, is going well. We've got 89% of our students with zero or one major discipline referrals. Major discipline referral being an incident that would require assistance beyond that of a classroom teacher. We also track our data per month and so this graph compares this year to last year. And we're pretty excited to see that we have decreased our average referrals per day in each month from this, from this year compared to last year. And I know January's not over yet, but we're averaging less than two referrals per day in January. Also at Madison, we know that a student who feels safe and calm learns best. So we have a social-emotional program that's embedded throughout the school to help our students come to the classroom ready each day. We have a mind-up curriculum that each classroom teaches alongside our guidance counselor that teaches students about the brain and about the benefits of breathing and relaxation techniques. That also kind of coordinates with our yoga calm as well. It helps students with calming and soothing techniques. Breathing exercises are often led by students with the breathing ball, as you can see there, up in front of the class where we take nice deep breaths from the bottom of our belly and have a lot of fun with those. And then our reflection room was in the video where it's just a temporary stop in the day for students to help self-regulate before they can get back to the classroom and continue their classroom activities.
At Madison, we have the co-teaching model where two teachers are paired together. A classroom teacher is paired with a special ed teacher, an EL teacher, or an interventionist. And during a literacy block, they have an hour time to do large group and small group instruction. They focus on a lot of new strategies, best practices. We do peer observations of each other. They have a lot of time to collaborate and plan together. And they meet as a team every day after school, as you can see on the schedule. Oh, the slide. The slide is of a grade fi- a grade four team and they are looking at some research and doing some planning. And what I've done on that, on that particular day is I made a video so I could be in all six grade levels at one time. So then the word, instead of having me spread that thin, I'm able to have all the, the grade-level teams hear the same instruction and kind of work on that same plan for some continuity. We also have data teams, so that is our, three times a month on our Wednesdays. This is a grade five team working on data. When they first start looking at what their classrooms and their needs would be, they prioritize by picking priority standards. Then they follow that six-step model where they're, after they identify this, the priority standard, standard, they actually make some pre-assessments. Then they look at best practices, they analyze everything, they set their SMART goals. And the cycle may take several weeks until they get to the post-assessment. And sometimes a lot of our teams now are saying, "I want a reading cycle and I want a math cycle going at the same time." So I think it's starting to be embedded into our practice, which is great. And here you can see another data team. This is a first grade group and they're working together.
So during our leadership teams, every, every two weeks, we always ask these really important questions. So what worked, what didn't, and why? And have we been moving closer to closing the achievement gap? And during this time, all of our, all of our leadership team members, each grade level shares out where they are in the cycle. And then again, they ask these three questions.
Just by having that extra time to reflect on data teams at our leadership team meeting, we've noticed that that vertical approach is really helping the team members generate more ideas so they know what the grade above and below are working on. And it just has really guided us into deeper conversations about the students' growth. Back about the co-teaching, we do a lot of collaborative planning with our extended day. So with that, we have provided a framework for our teams to look extensively at the standards and at all the curriculums and best practices, both in reading and math. And I think this year, it's just been going so smoothly when the teams know what day they're working on their activities, they've got a schedule, they've got rules that they've created among themselves so they know what their own roles are. And I think some of the quotes on the bottom, like the "teamy," they feel like they're very teamy and they get like the best of six people or seven in a group. They really are using each other's skill set very well.
And the great thing with our EL and our special ed teachers planning together is that we see their planning coming to life in the classroom.
Madison has 168 students in Chinese immersion program. Out of the 168, 24 were open enrolled from other districts. We also have seven Confucius Institute interns and two Amity interns. They help to differentiate our instruction by small groups and intervention. These 168 students do not only gain the benefit of acquiring another language, as research shows, they also, they are also enhancing their learning capacity for life and expanding their worldview, which echoes back to our mission that we are preparing our learners to be ready for today and tomorrow's society.
So Young Scholars is a program that is offered through the Talent Development and Accelerated Learning Department of the District. To qualify for this program, students must meet one or more of the qualifying criteria and be identified as having high potential in the areas of divergent or creative thinking. It is my privilege to work with over 100 students at Madison. The students and I work very hard on developing their potential and helping them to see the opportunities that are available to them. And this is a video that we, that I created of our Young Scholars at Madison, kind of talking a little bit about what they're learning and what we are doing in our groups.
Kanan, what happens when you get stuck on something hard?
You can concentrate on it and try and get out of it. Yeah, that's what I see.
What happens when you get stuck on something hard?
You can think about it and then you'll have a plan so you can get out.
What, what happens when you get stuck on something hard?
You wait for someone to help you. You wait for a grown-up to help you.
Hassan, what do you do if something bad happens? What can you do?
You can bounce back by thinking or happy things and by going to a park or playing with friends to forget about the bad things you did or, bad things you've said or heard or, or did.
Khan, what is resilience?
It is to bounce back from something bad.
Oh, what is the growth mindset?
You don't give up easily.
What is resilience?
It's recovery from something tough or an illness.
Diana, what is the growth mindset?
You never give up.
Sammy, what do we do when we are working on a challenge?
Um, we keep working on it. If it's, and if it's too hard, never give up.
If you're, what do we do when we're working on a challenge?
You work hard, you don't ever give up. If you give up, um, your challenge will be done at quicker.
So as you can tell, we are working a lot on resilience. We work a lot on the growth mindset and getting the kids to understand that just because something is hard, doesn't mean that they, they should give up right away. They just keep at things. So some of the things that we also do is we're, the fourth graders right now are making their own video games. So they're hitting roadblocks and we're problem-solving through that. The first graders are trying to make the tallest thing out of supplies and they have found out that they have to make the base stronger and things fall over. So they're learning lots of those life lessons and kind of that idea that they have to stick with something long enough to see it all the way through.
So another initiative that we have at Madison is the culturally and linguistically responsive teaching and learning, so CLR. And as you can see, the quote on there says, it's not, CLR is who you are, not what you do. And so it is embedded into everything that we do in our lesson plan template that we have for co-teaching and also just for, for our weekly lesson plans. Every, CLR is a part of that. We kind of build it into everything that we do. We have a Google folder to share ideas, we have a team that meets once a month. And the call and response that I modeled for you in the beginning is just one little part of CLR. There's lots of other things that we do that help our students be more, become more engaged in what we are teaching. The other thing that we do is called, and you can see it up there, Have You VAB Today? So you might wonder what that is. Vabbing stands for validating, affirming, building, and bridging. And so what our goal is, is that we are vabbing our kids. We are validating who they are, we are affirming who they are, we're building and bridging to where they can go. So that is all a part of what we do.
So what's our vision for us at Madison? So we're a school family who continue to learn and grow together. And so we've come a long way with a common language for using our school model of being safe and kind and responsible. We have our beautiful Madison Pledge that you see here. You heard the word "teaminess." That's something that our teachers use a lot that leads to our achievement. And every child matters as well as their growth. And our vision is to see the why behind what we do. And we are a school family, and I brought part of our school family with us tonight. And it's who we, how we continue to learn and grow together. And so we are Madison Proud. And so we are Madison proud. And we have one more thing for you today. Heather?
I'm gonna make you do something else. So another, it's actually, I learned this at the Avid training that we went to as a district a couple of years back. But we do cheers. So we celebrate when we do a good job at something, right? So we're gonna do the Oreo cheer tonight. This is one of the kids' favorites, right? Yeah, we like the Oreo cheer. So we'll model it for you first, and then, of course, you're gonna have to do it with us, because we did such a good job, right? So here we go. We're going to twist the Oreo. Okay, that's the Oreo cheer. It's pretty simple. So are you ready? Here we go. Twist it.
So again, we are very Madison proud. Do you have any questions? And thank you very much.
Questions, Jeff?
Principal Clark, I'm a very positive, half kind of full cup person, but I have to ask you a question. I love data, I love numbers. You said your data teams learn stuff, correct? What have they learned?
Yes, they do.
What have they learned or identified about the 2000 through 214 math score trends? That just jumps out at me as not a good thing.
Jumped out at us, too. We have a lot of work to do. And we are, we've dug deep into our data, and we are looking at, we've looked at strategies. We've broken it down. And I've got some teachers behind me here that can look, my academic coaches, two academic coaches behind me, too, that can help answer that. But we know that we have a lot of work to do. So maybe Denise and Heather, do you want to talk a lot about some of what we've been doing with our teachers? We have teacher talks going on right now, too. So they started this week. So we've been putting their data up on boards. We've been looking at growth. We've been looking at kids that need better interventions. And how can we grow these kids more?
Is it solvable, and do you have the tools?
Oh, that's a very good question. We don't have all the tools we need, no. We need a little more technology. We need, we could use some more ParaHelps. So one thing that we learned from one of our kindergarten teachers, do you know how she grew her kids? 23 out of her 25 kids grew because she had lots of volunteers in her room, working with kids. So that matters.
You answered that wonderfully. Today, you were at one of our teacher talks. So we did, you saw us diving into some data. We are a problem-solving team. So at those teacher talks, we ask them to ask us questions. So as an academic coach, I want a teacher to come and ask me things like, I need another instruction on some math strategies, or how can you help me? Or where can I go? What can we look for? So that is great conversations that we have during data teams or our teacher talks to get teachers the tools that they need. Being that Madison has a lot of brand-new teachers to the career, a lot of our, my job is staff development for them. Sometimes it's even on a one-to-one basis, so they can actually start for where they're at, because not everyone's at the same place. Just like we differentiate for kids, I'm always differentiating for the teachers, because they are all over. Having a lot of materials that we have, teaching them how to use the manipulatives, the staff development that we just had in January was focused on math. That really helped our teachers think about number sense. So we're starting to have those great conversations. So that's kind of what we're working on in math.
Thank you. I'm gonna pass Mustang, that's why I asked, too.
I just want to add one more thing. One of the other great questions we ask at all of our teacher talks is next steps. So we're always looking at the kids that haven't grown, and then what interventions do we need to put in place? What strategies can we do? And then next steps. That's how we end every conversations. And then, how can we support you? That's the last question we ask. What do we need to do to support you? So we have great conversations.
I know Bruce Mose was the next one to ask, but Jerry has a math follow-up question, so I'm gonna ask for Jerry to...
I just can't help myself to ask this question. Do you have any teachers here who were educated in China? And so there's a famous book in American education that compares how, supposedly how children are educated in math in China to how they're educated in the United States. And I've just always wondered, because we have this wonderful resource, when you came here, did you find, do you find, that the, our approach to elementary math education here is pretty much the same or very, very different from what you experienced in China?
This is a great question, that this has been where my passion was about. So teaching math in Chinese, kids, like students, already have the number sense by speaking it. Like our 12 is not called 12, it's 10-2, literally. And our 22, we don't have 20, 30, 40, these words. We have 4-2, 5-2, 6-2. And they have, they build up number sense by just saying the numbers. And our system is like, we don't transfer the number into our mind into words, and then transfer the words on the paper into number. We don't do the transition. So kids do learn math quicker and better. Our eighth graders last year, 100% passed, meet the MCA math, and 85% of them exceed.
Thank you. And just be interested, and you don't have to answer this now, but if there'd be anything that we could learn from what you bring from China that we could apply here in St. Cloud? But that's a question for another day. Thank you for your answer.
Thank you.
Bruce Mose?
Mr. Von Korf, in answering that question or adding to that question, that question or the answer, that was a discussion on a bus, a plane, a bike, a train, or walking in the market or whatever about 18 months ago, when I was in China with that individual that spoke to you.
The book is Liping Ma, Knowing and Teaching Elementary Math. But in any event...
Can I make a math comment since we're on that? Mr. Mose, were you gonna talk about math? I don't think we need to go to China to find out how to teach math. We just need to go to Clearview. They have 83% of their students passing the math MCA at the proficiency level. I hope that as a board, we think a little bit deeper than that, though when we look at the demographics and the other factors operating below the surface. The teachers at Madison are every bit as qualified, dedicated, and superb teachers as those at Clearview. The results are a little bit different. Maybe we should be looking at why. I had the good fortune today, and this is just purely coincidental, I just finished my time as liaison at Clearview, and I am now the school board liaison at Madison and had made arrangements to come over to Madison today to observe their PBS assembly. And when I came in to check into the office, it just so happened that Jeanne and Denise were meeting with a fifth-grade teacher to do their teacher talk. And so I had the chance to sit and actually take part of in that discussion. And to me, that is the essence of education in District 742. As we look at those teachers, the knowledge they have about where their students are, how it is shown on, they can show it on graphs. And at Madison, because you are a, I'm sorry, is it a needs improvement school, are doing monthly assessments, they've got a monthly graph of how the students are doing, are they showing progress? And while 39% are proficient at math right now, you can see visually the progress that kids are making and the growth that they're making in their math program. I wish that what we were talking about all of the time was the growth that students make, rather than being judged because of articles in the local newspaper about MCA scores on those proficiency tests. Because there's other things that are operating below the surface that influence that. And I would encourage us as a board to perhaps have a further discussion on that. But the other thing I want to say is I had a great time going to the PBIS assembly at Madison today. I had never heard of the mannequin challenge until the assembly today, but I figured out what it was. And I saw the kids do that when Jeanne Clark said, okay, 3, 2, 1, or whatever's the mannequin, and got them to pay close attention. But it was great to see the rewards and positives that students are getting at Madison for the progress that they're making and the work that they're doing. And so I would want to congratulate you on the great job that you're doing.
Mr. Mose?
I don't have a math question, but I do have just a kind of a reflection back. You know, 13 years ago this week, Jerry, you and I came on this board, and along with one of our colleagues, Joanne Dorser. And if the three of us were to get together right now and just have just a perfect clarity of the dialogues and the narratives and the kinds of presentations, from 13 years ago to today, this is 21st century progress. Each of us gets to make our own observation and our own analysis, and we have come a long, long way. And I'm just really, Jerry, am I hitting that mark that this is a new kind of dialogue we're having with people? And I want to also say, it's just what a pleasure it is that right now, we have only one person on this board that's bilingual. And I'm really proud of my colleague Monica, that you engage, as you do, in two languages with people. That's another wonderful accomplishment for this district. I want to just, my remarks, I want to just say to Khalid and Cara and Maurice. Khalid, listen carefully. Ma fientaii, magaiagua wa Bruce. Did that make some sense to you? A little, okay. A little. The father, ma fientaii, magaiagua wa Bruce. What did I try to say? How are you? My name is Bruce. Ma fientaii. So a little try. Cara, can't, Cara. Kara. Pardon me. Thank you. Tara. K-I-A-R-A? Kiara. Thank you. My name is Bruce. Kiara. Ni hao, xi xi. I just try these things out when I get a chance. Ni hao, xi xi. Hello, thank you. Just, that's all I know. And Maurice. Maurice, where's Maurice? Maurice, when you recited that pledge, that all of you did, and you recited it in the language, the only language that I can speak, and the most of us on the board, we only can speak one language. When you took that, said that pledge, it reminded me that if I could take that pledge every morning that all of you are about, I would be one better person. If I took that pledge, I could be as good as you. I could have as good a character as you do. And so thank you for reminding us of that, Maurice. So Jeanne, Sam, Denise, Jeanne Yee, Heather, Laura, let me just try something out here. When we look at the demographic sheets that were presented to us in these two presentations today, and if we were to go to all the other schools in our district, we would see those wheels, and we would see those charts, and line charts, and bar charts, and all these things. And it just reminds us that the demographics across our district are different. They're not the same. We're a different district, but we are different schools. And we, those demographics only show us our racial, our FRL changes, our special ed, our ELL. But they remind us that no matter what those demographics are in each of our schools, these are all our children. And all of you are doing such an exceptional job. If we were to have a pie chart that showed us a demographic about educators, and on that chart, there would be things, if we could measure and count things such as preparation or dedication or caring, things like that, it would be the same chart across this district. There would be no change. All of our educators in this school district are embedded with all of those values and all of those ideals. When you talk about data analysis and collaborative planning and Avid and all of these things, permit me to say that a long, long time ago, when two characters like Von Korf and Mose went into teaching, that was not part of our world. We were good at what we did with what we had. But boy, do I wish I had the futures of some of you teachers. I wish I had your futures, all of you. Thank you for the incredible job that you're all doing, and I appreciate these so much. Thank you. Certainly do.
Monica?
Ni hao ma. Somal alikum. Good evening. I have three questions. So I'm going to make the questions one by one. What is a cultural conscious community?
I can tell you a story about cultural and conscious school community that just happened in the last two weeks. So last week was Chinese New Year, and I, we, as a school, have an activity of celebrating Chinese New Year. We teach a mini lesson about Chinese New Year to the whole school, and we taught them how to say Happy New Year in Chinese. And our students keep saying Happy New Year to me this whole week. And when I pick up the bus at the bus stop, and I, this has been a week, and I ask them like, why? And they tell me, because we learned in the mini lesson, Chinese New Year lasts 15 days. Yes, it does. And these students say it to me and all the Chinese teachers, because they know this holiday is our traditional holiday, and is very important and special to our culture, to us. Just as how American festivals are important to Americans, and how Indian festivals are important to Indians. This culture awareness and this empathy is the symbol of Madison as a culture conscious community, I believe. Thank you.
The other question that I have is, you were talking, one of you was talking about culturally and linguistically responsive teaching and learning. What is that exactly? How does it look like, if you can give us an example?
So in the classroom, how does it look? Or, well, we use it in our staff meetings. We, the whole staff has been trained in culturally and linguistically responsive education. So Dr. Shrocky Holly came, and across the district, it is initiative that I think, if I'm speaking correctly, I think all buildings have had at least some training in. So it is a way to connect with our students, so, and ways to validate and affirm their home cultures, whether it be our African-American students or our Somali students. We find ways to really honor their cultures, and then try to bridge them into what is the mainstream culture. So there are reading strategies that we use, discussion protocols that we use within the classrooms. The call and response is one part of it as well, but not the most important part.
My last question is about demographics. You show us a picture of demographics that is 46% white and 45% black. Okay, something along those lines. Um, what is the breakout for the individual programs? Is the immersion program the whole school? For the immersion programs?
That was for our entire school? So, you're wondering how many of those students are in our immersion program? We have a hundred and sixty-eight students in our immersion program. Is that what you're asking?
No, what is the demographic? What is the division between blacks and whites in the immersion program?
I don't have that right at my fingertips right now, I'm so sorry, but we could get that information for you.
And we have that tracked at the district level, and I can make sure that the board gets that information.
Yeah.
Earlier in the discussion, the math discussion, uh, member Pol Rice asked you some questions about, um, test scores, and then I asked some questions about maybe different teaching methods. And I want to emphasize that, uh, and there was the comment that, that, uh, Clearview teachers are just as good a teachers as you are, and I want to emphasize that when we inquire about, "How can we improve?", we're not judging who's better teachers than who. The, you, I hear you saying that you are spending a ton of time, uh, dealing with the math challenges that you have, and that's what good teachers do. It isn't a statement that you are bad teachers, that there must be something else maybe that you can try. And the folks at Clearview maybe have been given some students that have some advantages in math that your students don't have, but that doesn't mean that we District 742 have to accept, and I see you agreeing with me. And it isn't about good teachers, bad teachers. It's about taking, in fact, when you look at all of the teacher, schools that have transformed themselves, almost none, none of them have done it by getting rid of bad teachers. They've done it by doing what you are doing, which is investing in professional staff development. But I think we cannot answer the question, "Why isn't Madison, can Madison get where Clearview is?", by saying, "No, it can't, because we already got good teachers." That's not the issue. We already do have good teachers. The issue is, can you figure out a way to overcome these challenges? And I believe that if we're resilient, if we provide you with adequate resources and professional staff development, maybe some extra time, and maybe send some of you to China to find out what they're doing, or up to Clearview, I don't know, that you will transform yourself. But not because your bad teachers turned into good teachers, because you are good teachers, uh, doing what good teachers do, which is, is to adjust to the circumstances that they have.
And he, yes, we can. And those are, I, in my office at home, I have "Yes, we can" written up there. And I, my Eric story, we have that belief in us. We have that "Yes, we can." And let me tell you things on the whiteboard during my teacher talks. One of the things that we have, number one says, "How can we help our kids be successful on MCAs, on ORFs, on STAR testing?" That's one thing that teachers have to answer before they end with our teacher talks. Number two is, um, we talk about, "Who are the, who are the leaders in your classroom? And how are you giving them opportunities to be leaders? And what are their strengths?" Every time, we want our teachers to be talking about all of the kids' strengths in the classroom. And the next one is, um, the fourth one is, Denise, help me.
Got it.
Um, oh, strengths, and, um, what do you need from us? Resources? Yeah. So, we're, we're doing that, Jerry. Um, we want, we want them to have that "Yes, we can" attitude for all of our kids, and it has to be in here. Teachers have to believe it, and our, most of all, our kids have to have the "Yes, we can, I can do it" attitude, doing everything.
Thank you.
Monica?
I have a comment about, um, um, about comparing teachers from one school to another. And I think that is a comment more for our board. Um, I, I feel a little bit uncomfortable, and I think that is, we're being a little bit unfair with the schools, asking them or making a comparison about how good the, the, the kids are at Clearview while they are not at Madison. We're comparing two different schools, very different. We have a seventy percent free and reduced lunch people at Clearview, and we have a twenty-seven percent, I'm sorry, seventy percent at Madison, twenty-seven percent at, um, Clearview. And I think that that has a lot to do with those scores. And I think that there are resources that actually supports my, my, um, my, my inquiry that, that has to do with those scores. Um, I think that we need to talk more about the barriers, instead of quality of teachers or quality of teaching, and then, uh, focus a little bit more about what the barriers are for those scores getting there, and what are the resources that are needed to be invested on that. So, I'd like to have that conversation in a future meeting.
And if I could respond, I, I think that's exactly what I was saying. The, the, I never made the Clearview comparison. I didn't bring Clearview up. I didn't compare them to anyone. The issue is, are there things that we can do to do better? And that's partly their responsibility, it's partly our responsibility. And if you think that we're just doing exactly as good as we can, then, kind of what, why do we have a superintendent? Why do we have a curriculum person? I, no one is asking that a generic school get the same test scores as any other generic score, uh, school system. The question is, are we doing as well as we can?
Can, Chair, no. I need to inject my voice into this one. And so, as the conversation started, um, and we're talking about schools, so I become uncomfortable when we start to do that. But there was a statement or a question made by Mr. Pol Rice, where he, where you said, "Is it solvable?" Okay? And I did not speak to that, because I listened to their answer. But is it solvable? And so, it, because it correlates to this entire discussion that the board is having, and I have some young people out there that A, need to go to sleep, B, some staff that it's been a real long day. So, I'm just gonna end it with this. Is it solvable? As a parent, and as that kid that we are discussing, it better be solvable. Okay? As a parent, and as that kid, it better be solvable. And in Jean's office, the way it's written down, her fourth thing, um, the "Yes, we can," if you were to walk into my office, it's, "You don't have a choice." Okay? We don't have a choice. So, is it solvable? Again, as a parent and as that kid, you don't have a choice with your answer. You don't have a choice with your answer. Our answer, "Yes, it's solvable." So, we have to get that done. I do need to make a comment to Kiara, Khalid, Maurice. Did I say that correctly? Okay? You guys are fifth grade? Fourth grade? Okay? All right. At that age, if you had asked any of us to sit up in front of the school board, and to recite things in different languages and ask different, answer different questions at eight forty-nine at night, I think we would not have passed that test. I'm extremely happy and proud to be the three of your, to be your superintendent, to know that what we're up here talking about tonight, what goes on every day, affects you and how you represent District 742 St. Cloud area schools. For the educators that are sitting there, hey, I come to Madison all the time, and I see the things that you guys do, and I'm amazed on a daily basis every time I come in there. So, I want to say thank you to the staff. But to the students, I need to say, "Thank you."
And as the chair, I haven't had a chance to say anything yet, but I will say that we're very proud of the work that you guys do at Madison. There's a lot of different languages spoken by a lot of students in our district. Some students come to our district speaking another language and learn English, and they're bilingual. Other students come to our schools, speaking fluent English, and they learn another language in our schools and become bilingual. And we're very proud of both of those, both of those groups of students, and the students that only speak English and move through our schools also. I think it's really important to keep in mind that in the United States, the primary language spoken is English. And to have a really good, firm grasp on English is important to going on with your life in the United States and communicating with people all over. So, we have to, we have to remember that, too. But everybody up here is doing a great job. Um, I certainly wouldn't compare schools either, because it, anytime you compare a group, there's differences. And what's really important is that you look at each student individually, and you, I want you to be able to tell me that they're growing, and they're better. At the end of the year, they've grown from where they were at the beginning of the year. And we want to see as much growth as we can see in, in all students in that period of time. And if you can show me that student A is growing a year and a half, that's irrelevant, or it's totally irrelevant what student B did in that same time period. But if I'm looking at student B, it's very important that that student is growing at least a year in that year also. So, anyway, thank you for coming and making the presentation tonight. We really appreciate it, and we appreciate everybody, everything that you do.